We'll move that mic over to Brian.
Is anybody coming?
Sitting there?
So Jeff will share this when they come up. He's going to be over there.
We've had a request to make sure we speak into the mics.
They can't hear us online when they're recording, so.
I'm a pretty loud talker.
Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. I'm sorry it's just a couple of minutes late. We do have one person wishing to address the school board. Bruce Danielson. And it is on an agenda.
No.
Non-agenda topic. So you have three minutes, Bruce. Would you please give us your full name and your street address? I'm here. Get the mic for you right there.
I'm Bruce Danielson in Sioux Falls, 670409. I tried to, I wanted to speak the other night at the school board meeting and I was told about the, I was a couple of minutes late, so anyway, I wanted to talk about transparency and issues that we're having around what had gone on with this recently passed bond election. That we've been looking at all the different bond issues that have gone around in the state in the last few years, and none of them passed the first time around, or almost not. I believe Al Suster might have passed on their first attempt to get a new high school. We've not been critical of getting new schools because everybody needs schools. We've just had this growth burst in Sioux Falls, and we know that that's an issue. But I asked for some information on September 27th for some information on the being able to audit all of the school election information, including the ballots. South Dakota has a sunshine law. When I was in Pierre working back about 40 years ago, all of this was passed, the section 127-1. And I've asked to have the ability. I've been working with different news media organizations and citizens that are willing to come in and audit all of the records and the processes of the election. I was chairman of the Minnehaw County Election Review Committee in 2015, and we found a lot of problems with the way that the elections had been run in our county, and especially in our city, school board included, for years. And it caused a lot of confusion, and people weren't able to show up and vote at the right places. I've heard a lot of information from people since this election, they went to where they thought they could vote, they couldn't, and they couldn't get to where they needed to vote. Problem we had, and I'll leave these copies with the board here in case you haven't seen them, but I found at least 13 issues before the polls had closed in the way that this election had been structured. Then after we watched the process in this room of tabulating the votes, we had problems. There's a situation here where we have no audit pack, and that's a real problem in elections. People that were sitting in this room did the best job they could. I talked to poll workers who were working that day as I went around, as I always do, and checked with several polling locations, and they were telling me that they had problems in that process. I would really like to be able to bring the media in and show how the process was done and make suggestions so that the fiascos that happened during this election never happen again. So I will leave this information.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you. We'll go from there. Appreciate you taking the back. Okay. We will move on to item three on the agenda, the bond implementation next steps. Dr. Mark.
Yes, there's not enough copies, so I'll make some copies.
No, you don't have to. You can get the.
Well, Matt, you know, I've been here long enough, you know, that many times you ask me what time it is, I'll tell you how the clock works. This might be one of those times. So I have a little story. Peg and I, as you know, have three kids, and when they were young, when our youngest was born, we have a three-year-old, a one-year-old, and a newborn. So for about 21 years in our house, we had kids. And then there was a point in time where our youngest left the home, and we were empty nesters. And Peg and I kind of looked at each other and said, well, now what do we do? And I think that's kind of where we are as a school district. We've been talking about a bond issue for a long time, and we put a lot of energy and a lot of effort into a process that we thought was steeped in community involvement, steeped in transparency, and steeped in a solution. But now that that's passed, kind of looking at each other and say, well, now what do we do? Well, today, we're here to kind of answer that question as to the, what's next? What do we do? What does the successful bond referendum mean to the school district? One of the things that gets talked about a great deal, and has from the beginning, is the high school. And I've got to remind folks that the high school is one piece, a really important piece, but one piece of this entire bond implementation process. So what we're going to do today is talk about the bond issue in its totality, what does it look like going forward from today to conclusion? Then we're going to back up and look at one piece of that process, and that is, what about that high school? And what steps do we need to put into place for that high school? And then when we're done with those two issues, I'll summarize what can you expect to see in the next couple of months in terms of steps in the process? So if you follow that, it's big picture, bond implementation, high school timeline of events, and then a summary, what can you expect to see next? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Kreider. I've got one more story.
Brian, we don't have a lot of time.
The night of the bond election, Doug Morrison was sitting in here with Beek. When it became clear that the bond issue was going to pass, Doug Morrison said, well, this is the time where, Brian, your stress level is going to go down, and Jeff Kreider's stress level is going to go up. So I'm very pleased to pass that stress torch over to Jeff to say, Jeff, how about you tell us what these next five years?
I just hope I have hair at the end of this thing. I've already gone too white, so.
I had a full head of hair when we started.
But this spreadsheet I put together, I think everyone has one on their place, kind of gives an overall snapshot of what we're looking at, and I've kind of broke it down into fiscal years and to see what it, how it might all lay out. This is a proposal that we came up with. They tried to balance how we can get it all taken care of within, you know, our staffing and also the construction and the community. There might be some ebb and flow of this, but I think it's a pretty solid plan, looking at it. And what I did was take the priority recommendations from that committee and really try to look at that and follow that down through. There's a couple, like Memorial, that might be up, and I'll tell you the reason why we're doing that. So we start with the high school. This is a plan that would start right away. Steve will get into the more detail of that, but this is kind of what to open up in May 2021. And you can see where the purchase, the nomenclatures are. P's are for planning, C is for construction, L is for land, where we have to hit some of these marks, F is for furniture and equipment. So those are kind of, so you see where we're going to try to be planning for those pieces. So in the construction phase, we'll be doing the furniture and equipment and bringing that in. We have to have the construction done a little bit in time and so forth, so we can get the furniture in and get it set up. So if you look at the high school, middle school, and middle school, this is a plan also that shows finishing in May 2021. And I want to put an asterisk on both of those. Everything has to hit pretty precise in plan to accomplish that. And really, the main thing is not so much the architects and everything else, it's getting the land established, going through the zoning processes and those sort of things. So if we can accomplish that, we have a good chance at it. So Steve will bring some of the land potentials for the high school. We met yesterday with the potential for the middle school. We're working on that. So things are moving forward, but nothing set in stone yet. Then Northwest Elementary, we're looking at a 2024 opening, and that's where this plan puts it at, and that was what the original task force had. And you can see where we'll be planning that in this, starting in July, you know, with surveying and those sort of things, and then starting, once school starts, with the planning of that in 2022. So we're out there. What we did here, once you go down to the existing buildings, those are the new buildings. And you go to the existing buildings, you look at where they are, where they're in the sequence. I did a summary on the bottom, so it's a lot easier to look at instead of looking at all those pieces. But Cleveland is a two, probably be a two summer project, so JFK would be a two summer project. So we have to look at how we can accomplish these onsite, kind of very similar to CIP when we did those big CIP plans. So we have to build something, then move things in, and then come back and renovate. So those are the biggest two domino projects associated with that. And you can see how construction, and then we open up certain sections, you can see the red is the completion of certain areas, and then we go back and do some renovations. But as you can walk through, if you go to the backside, you can see where we look at. These are potentially where we're planning on bidding these projects. And then we can go back and look at the completion of them, trying to get August during the year. Some of those go into December, you know, where we're doing the dominoes of those two. But, you know, fiscal year, that the current year that we're in, we're looking at the high school, middle school, and Memorial Middle School. And we moved Memorial Middle School up. They're going to be the most impacting until we get that middle school up. So we said, can we get that accomplished and get that music area taken care of so they have a, at least why they have the most people in there, they can at least utilize it? So that's kind of the reason we moved that one up. It's a small enough one, I think we can get it done fairly quick and through the summer and be open for the fall of next year. So then if you move on to FY '20, we're looking at Robert Frost Horace Mann and Laura Wilder. You've got the two entrances and then an ADA one. And we'll start planning that next summer into the fall when we have people available, when we're available and when staff is available to start meeting. Then we go into fiscal year '21, we'll have Cleveland, Lincoln High School, IPC, Jane Adams. If you look at Jane Adams, Jane Adams, we split that into two projects. The early one is the classroom, and the later one we put in is the playground and that. And we did that for a reason because we have some people that are still in the house, and hopefully, we're not looking at forcing anybody out of their home. So hopefully, in that time period, that will become available. So that's a reason, and we split that one in that way. Then in fiscal year '22, JFK, Washington, and Roosevelt, and those will be kind of combined, will be designed the same way, they'll be identical, then Hayward. And then fiscal year '23 is the new elementary will start. The potential Jane Adams will be planned and started in Central Services, which is strategically placed there, that'll be a balancing project as, you know, depending on how the bids go. And I think we talked about that. Then we have the land. The Whittier will start planning for that. You know, we could probably plan for that from now until whenever, until about '21, when we start maybe purchasing some of that, giving it some more thought, maybe having some neighborhood meetings and those sort of things, so we can calm some of those fears down over there. So that's really all the projects, and I could get into a lot of detail if you want to, you just tell me how detailed you want to be. But that's kind of the tentative timeframe, and I think it balances them out so we have adequate planning and construction and get them done. And our goal is to really be done by July of 2024 with all of them, or August of 2024.
I'm sure you'll think of other projects past that.
Well, there's, and, you know, we've already, I mean, there is that other group of prevent a maintenance, O and M projects that were listed in that task force. And this also helps us be able to plug those in and budget for them in the capital outweigh. I mean, if we're doing a, you know, where it makes sense, only where it makes sense. Some of them will make sense, some of them, we'll break it out and bid it differently. But I always try to bring them together if it makes sense for the project.
The stars line up, this is realistic.
This is realistic, yeah. The only thing will be is middle school and high school, if the land falls into place, we'll be able to achieve that timeframe.
I'll tell you, Jeff's kind of, he's being really kind about that. I know the high school, we've always talked about that's going to be a challenge to get in by 2021, although we're still saying it's doable. Honestly, the bigger challenge right now might be that middle school by 2021. I think we're going to have high school, we have some real solid options for high school land, and those will become more obvious to us in the coming months. Middle school land, when Jeff said that, we had a conversation yesterday, I would say that's the first really strong conversation we've had about middle school land, and we're not exactly sure where that's going to go yet, so the conversation, the conversation's going to be, so the middle school is every bit as problematic as the high school in terms of being in it by 2021.
Yeah. See ya. Mike, our thought is there'll be, we'll follow the district policy for hiring architects that we'll look at. If there's architecture records, if we're going to look at prototypes, if that makes sense to us. And then, you know, ones that we don't, we'll do an RFP to solicit. There's probably a half a dozen of these that will go the RFP route, and then we'll submit an RFP and get people lined up, so.
A lot of work here for a lot of people.
Yeah.
Questions for Jeff on any of this? So you seem relaxed.
Well, this is good to have in place, I tell you that. Put some time into this. And Todd wants the funding by month, and I think we've got that, you know, so his bond can have that. So I think we're starting to get things lined up and organized so we can move forward.
And Jeff does appear calm, and he always appears calm. He's like that duck swimming on the water, underneath the water, there's a rock growing on. He has been, he's been really busy before the bond issue, but in the last two weeks, he's been incredibly busy and is taking it all in stride.
All right. Thank you, and good question. I mean, we want to make sure that the timeframe, the timelines are all realistic and that we're not pushing you too hard. I mean, you know, we've.
I tried to look at that as far as our planning, so we don't want to rush through the planning either with the buildings and the staff and those sort of things. And, you know, I think we're realistic with all that.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Okay, our next report, do you want to introduce him, Jeff? Me too?
You can, either or.
So that completes kind of the big picture. When I was learning how to be a teacher, they talked about whole part whole, begin with the whole, break it down into parts. So there was the whole. The part now is, what about the timeline for the high school within this whole picture? And as you know, we've already hired Architecture Incorporated and DLR to shepherd us through that process, and we have Steve Jastre here from ARC Inc. to talk to us today about what is that high school timeline and what does that process look like?
I'll invite Steve up and turn it over. Maybe I'll work off the portion that I was at.
Steve Jastre with Architecture Incorporated, 415 Salton. Also have Mitch Aldinger here as well. What I would like to do is kind of run through a couple of things today. One of them, show you the potential sites that we're starting to look at, and then also the schedule for the Dr. Parker was laid out. We did pass these out to everyone here, and I'd like to show that here. I think that becomes a little bit out. As mentioned, for the 2021 completion date for the new high school, things have to start moving now. And we, and they can work, but they need to move very progressive. We would like to, and I want to run through the schedule with you as an overview, excuse me, real quickly. We need to start meeting next week, and I think what can potentially plan is next week, October 8th, we'd like to meet with the steering committee. I think that's going to be a group of people, the administration, you guys are putting that together. We'll be meeting weekly with that steering committee, and there's a lot of things to decide, everything from sites, to the building program, to the what ifs, to the greenings sections, et cetera. So next week, we want to start those meetings. We're continuing to obtain site information, even giving you more information from the city even this week. The week of October 15th, we want to potentially interview the various stakeholders, whoever that may be, you know, if there's additional staff, whatever the steering committee, if you want us to interview, we want to learn everything, what all your ideas are, your thoughts, your needs. That way, we can implement in the design. We also want to have, we, during that October 15th, we're going to start talking about that inquiry-based education model. There's different education models that are being used, which affect the building's shape and form and function. And we want to have those discussions with your steering committee group as well, start that very soon. What we call the discover and explore, the week of October 22nd, that'll hold us a lot on today versus tomorrow. We found that as a good way, just sit down, brainstorm, what do we do today, how are we going to accommodate things for the future? We need to know that as well. Discover and explore the next week of October 29th, continue those discussions. The week of November 5th, we kind of, this week, we'll start to actually do site design options. But at the bottom here, I wanted to mention the schedule objectives, real quickly, to Jeff's laid this out actually very well on his overall program here, and the schedule for the 2021 completion date, we need to complete the building program, usually confirmed by November 6th. And that ability program, again, that's the map that identifies how big the school is, how many rooms you have, how big are they, how do we do our education models, all those decisions are going to have to set up, and we really do need that kind of confirm by November 6th, because that's the guideline that we use to design the building for what Sioux Falls school district needs. So that's confirmed by November 6th. We also, beyond this timeline, we would really like to select a site by November 6th. We're going to be researching eight of them, I'm going to show you eight spots here in just a minute, but by November 6th, and hopefully, we can work out at least preliminary versions of the inventory, whatever that happens by November 6th, because we then have to get various site-specific act. We want to confirm, how do we know the site by November 6th? Because by the way, every site, the building has to not only fit your program requirement, it has to fit the site, the contour, utilities, our customer wins, I mean, every site, the building will be designed slightly different. We hope that by November 6th, when I was doing the time, that the site, the building concept design will be laid out, and we'll know which site, and basically, where on the site, is the building on, where's the entrance, where's the parking, where's the athletic field, where's the practice fields, we're going to have a pretty basic idea of all the site lays out. We'll also know, frankly, by then, what sort of city or utilities are needed to get it, to get it. What's important, I add is the next one here, it's called the concept cost model, confirmed by December 14th. We have management here by leading the next monster, so we start, we'll be looking at a construction manager to bring them on board, and they'll help do some cost estimates. Well, as we're designing the building in sight in the month of November and December, well, by the middle of December, the 14th, we would like the construction manager along with us in our input, kind of telling you, what do we expect this project to cost? You guys have done very accurate square foot estimates from the board, well, now we need to give you more exact numbers. And we kind of want to make sure we're in the ballpark here by December 14th to help make decisions, because the ultimate objective here is that by the end of January of 2019, we do want to have the preliminary building plan designed and reviewed, and everyone's excited about how this new design works out. Because then, of course, after it's designed, this would include exterior renderings, floor plans, site plans, and an updated cost estimate by the construction manager, because once that's approved, then we have to start the more detailed drawings so that we can actually start earthwork. We need to start moving earthwork in the spring of 19 to be able to meet this construction to be done in the summer of 2021. So things need to move along quickly, but they can, and the big thing I wanted the board to be aware of, and meeting with your steering committee weekly here for the next two months will be crucial. And so we'll schedule that as we go. I'd like to now show you real quickly what the eight sites are that have currently been brought up and have been presented to the school district, and we're starting to get information on all of them. As you look at the drawing that you have in front of you, north is toward the top. The big identifying element here is this is Interstate 29, of course, that goes north and south. Southeast Technical Institute is right here, just to the west of the interstate. The other identifying part, of course, next to that is Sioux Falls Tech High School, which is right there. Your correct Career Tech Education Academy is now here. This street is Madison, and this street up here is May. This street is Madison, and this street up here is May. Well, the sites that have been offered, uh, mentioned to the school district, we just started to label them sites A, B, C, and et cetera. Uh, we started on the west side and just kind of moved our way to the east. But Site A is over here, now I should point out to you, this is McCovern Middle School, right here. That's it, McCovern Middle School, and the site here, Future Elementary is just south of it, which is, which is right there. So there are three sites, that's McCovern Middle School. Site A is one landowner, another landowner, same landowner owns V1 and V2. That's probably labeled as V1, V2, because it's the same landowner, and we could go either way with that. Uh, this street here is Almeza Drive, that runs north, and the north and south there. As you start to go east, there's a landowner that really owns this whole quarter section, and this can be divided up into three different parcels, C1, C2, and C3. There's a big dividing, kind of crick that kind of flows right through here that we need to work around and maintain, and so I'm sure the final shapes of C1, C2, and C3 could be adjusted to get our 40 to 45 acres, uh, but they're right there. Um, and of course, now Marion Road is this street right here, and as you know, Marion Road continues on north up to Interstate 90. Another site, another landowner is Option B, which is currently at this location, again, that's kind of close to the Career Tech Academy, which is right here, and it's pretty close to the south of the, Sutols Tech High School and Southeast Technical Institute over there, and it confronts somewhere in the road. And then the last site that, that we will review is Site E. This is over here, um, kind of get your bearing, the Ramcoa Inn is right at this location, so it's just to the north of that. This is the airport, Melman Golf Course is in here, this is one of the, one of the runways. So the Pentagon is, is just farther north, come up, uh, the, the street here, Westport Avenue, Pentagon is, is up to the north. So right now, this is approximately 45, 40 to 45 acres of land that, that is available to look at. So what we're doing, uh, we started already this week, and next week as well, we're going to meet with the city. We also want to talk with our civil engineers, we need to know where city utilities are, you know, city sewer, sanitary sewer, uh, city, city water lines, where the streets are going to be developed, because some of these out here, these areas don't have developed streets yet. Well, obviously, that's got to happen at the same time, so we're going to start our research on all eight sites, uh, before we start. But, uh, we'll be discussing more of those details with your steering committee as we get, get the information. So I guess I just wanted to share the eight indications right now, because I'm sure people have all been curious as to where, what are the options? And right now, these are the eight that we have been made aware of, Jeff.
That's correct, and we do have a meeting set up tomorrow morning with city planning and engineering to go through all these sites, to look at what the potential is, where things are, you know, what the impact of each one of these sites will be. So that's part of the bidding process, they'll be putting their pros and cons together with that information, so we have all that in place at one spot. So we'll be able to start evaluating, point totally, and find out what's the best site that we have.
And each one is enough.
Jeff, the call, you said, uh, what we proposed as part of our plan is we're going to take all the sites and we put together a matrix, where we're going to rate the sites for all the different things, the vehicle access, utilities, tow bill, extra construction cost items, I mean, we have a whole list of about 40, 50 items, that we're going to rate each site based on those requirements, and so that we feel it's a very logical way to come up with, well, what is the best site? Who scored the best? Which site scores the best? And that's part of our process.
Because there's uniquenesses to each site. You know, there's pros and cons, there's positives to others, there's negatives to some, and some are more negative than others, and we'll be, probably after the cities meeting, we'll probably take the four and go do soil borings, you know, some that you may just, you know, know that it's not going to be conducive to develop. Uh, but then we'll do soil borings, and we'll know what that is and the impact of those sort of things. I think we have enough knowledge, but we don't want to take anything for granted, because we built Memorial, we built Southeast Tech and all those, and they're fairly similar soils, but, so I think we know what it is, but I don't want to guess at this point when we evaluate.
And every one is big enough? Every one of these?
Everyone will be.
Will be or won't move along the process.
Yes, yeah, they're all big enough. Actually, the Bakerland could go all the way around, you know, where it says future site, they have two big farms there. Um, but you got to look at rogues too, and we know that that, the south, farther south you go with those sites, probably not even one high school. So, um, so with that, those are the two ones we pointed out for that real soon. He's from Kansas City, and we've had some conversations, and I think he's willing to look at any site that we think's the best, so.
He dotted lines at the top, those are, that's the boundaries?
Yeah.
So it's not, I mean, it's not really a, it looks like it's all zigzaggy.
Right, the boundary line between West Central and Tri Valley, it really does do a lot of zigzagging out there, and that is your boundary line. I do believe right to the west of that is West Central, and I think Tri Valley is part of the one to the north.
There they are.
So yeah, you're right at the, for example, Site V1, if that were you would choose, right, you're right at the school boundary line, as it currently exists, but I know school boundary lines is another whole topic. Any questions, sir?
As part of the, um, kind of matrix, I know you're looking at a lot of things, like you said, city, sewer, stuff like that, do we also take into consideration things like, when you look at, like a campus, maybe you'd call it, where you have an elementary, a middle, and a high school, and the positives and negatives of having something so close together? I think of like Memorial, Discovery, Roosevelt, which even would be probably further apart than kind of this area, and what are the good things about that, and what are maybe some of the drawbacks to that? Does that come into play at all when you look at these locations?
Uh, definitely, yes, and we'd like to have those discussions with the, your steering committee as well, because, yes, there's pros and there's also hots, you know, the way you've offset your schedule starts is, I know that's helped huge, and maybe, because that's kind of an educational answer as well.
Exactly, Steve, I think the, that'll be part of the, part of the conversation that'll help with that dialogue, is we'll have a design development team as part of the steering committee, that Dr. Boyson will lead, and I think they'll be able to, uh, look at, look at the industry standard, if you will, what, what, what product can we look at? Uh, I know last year we were down in Nashville, and we saw just a very similar situation to that, so we have, we have at least one that we can look at to say, what are the advantages, what are the disadvantages, just like you mentioned?
So I imagine that the, um, once the steering committee looks at all these, and will they determine, um, recommendations that'll come to the board for land sites, or?
So the, I'll talk about the steering committee and the design development committee, we'll have two different committees going concurrently, I'll talk about those in a minute. Ultimately, the land selection, that'll be a board of education decision, um, but that'll come with a lot of conversation, as Steve has talked about, and Jeff has talked about, where they'll involve civil engineers, they'll involve the, the rubric of the, the 40 different issues, or whatever it was, the matrix of, of issues, and, and I think there'll be a recommendation that comes to you, so you don't, as a board, have to blindly determine what the best site is. But that'll be vetted through Arc Inc., through civil engineers, through conversations with city planners, through operational services, through the steering committee, and then ultimately to the board of education.
So when I look at a calendar, today's the third, and we, and we won't, and we'll have two meetings, so are we thinking like by the 22nd of October? In order to meet that second, November 2nd date, we would have enough information to actually have a formal vote, or it would come as of like the 8th of, sorry, the 5th?
Well, I arbitrarily at one point in time said November 1st by having a, a high school selected, and I see November 2nd, so you can already see we're moving that back.
Sure.
It was a joke.
[laughing]
I think early, I think early in Nov, I think early in November, I think, uh...
Because our first meeting would be the 12th, then?
Yeah, and I would...
You mean in the work session, that you can get enough dialogue back and forth to...
That we can then have a vote at that first meeting?
Yeah, uh, first meeting in November, something along those lines is where I would guess, and today it's a guess.
Sure.
Where I would guess, we would, we would take some formal action on the site.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a very good question, I should, when I mentioned here that Friday, November 2nd, did, that did mean, that did not mean board approval by that date.
Okay.
It's just, I think by then, we got to know, at your, at your November board meetings is when you would be making final decisions.
Okay.
But I think the site that makes the most sense will be coming to the top equivalent.
Sure.
Other questions for Steve or for Jeff?
It's nice to have options. You know, I think as we grow and grow and grow, we see less and less just land available, and so it's nice to look at that and say, okay, let's, let's make a decision, let's have a choice about something, versus feeling like, well, this is where it's going to be, and we're going to make it work, you know? So I think this makes me feel really good to know that there's some different areas and some different things, and like you mentioned, there's going to be great things about some, and there's going to be downfalls to some, and they all are going to have both of those, but I feel like, given the options that you've showed us today, that, like you said, one will rise to the top, there will be a, a really great location that will, um, how is our high school, yeah? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, well, that's been quite a bit of information already, so, uh, at, at this point, you might be a little dizzy in, in terms of everything that you've seen from the total bond perspective and from a high school perspective, so I'm going to, I'm going to break it down to, what are, what are the eight things that are going to happen from bond election day to November? What can you expect to see in the, in the next six weeks? Uh, three things have already happened, I would say. Number one is there need to be a selection of a architectural team. Check, we've done that, that, that formally at the last board of education meeting. Arc Inc. and DLR will, will move us through that process. Second thing is need to put a timeline together for the total bond implementation. The day after the bond, the media had questions about, well, now what? Great questions, and I think that's what today was designed to do, to say, well, now what, and what does that look like over the next six years? So check on that, I know that's tentative, that's fluid, but you, but you get an idea of what that program's going to look like for the next six years. The third thing is the timeline for the high school. Check as of just a couple of minutes ago. We've got the timeline for the high school, at least in terms of selection of the land. So now, what about those things that need to happen? There are two committees that we're going to put together, uh, as a result of the desired communication to the architectural team. We're calling one the steering committee, and I want the steering committee to have a broad focus of total bond implementation. So I want the steering committee to, to be about 10 people strong, and a committee that makes sure that the, the social contract that we've entered into with our community gets followed for the next six years. So two of those people, I, I just asked President Alberti before this meeting if he would begin thinking about having two board members be a part of that committee, and then, I'll round out the, the other, the other folks on that committee. That committee will start meeting next week. And then as a subset of that committee, and specific to the high school issue, is a design development committee, and that committee will answer to the steering committee, but maybe will be more fluid for Steve and the architects and his team to answer specific design questions, one like Carly asked earlier. I think we'll leave that up to the folks in curriculum services specifically, and what does that look like? Now, now maybe it's a broader concept than that, but that would also be vetted then through the steering committee. So the steering committee would be the group that's meeting weekly, uh, for two months, I think Steve said, maybe, maybe longer, I don't know. Uh, and that group will be engaged immediately. So we'll, we'll put that group of about 10 people together, and I'll have that group put together by the end of this week, so that they're ready to begin meeting next week. The design committee then will be, will be a, a part of that, and I would see Teresa Boyson being the, Dr. Boyson being the liaison between the design committee and the steering committee. So then the, the weekly meetings begin next week. Site selection will happen November 1st, November 2nd, November 12th, somewhere in there. We'll go through that site selection, and as Board Member Ryder said, it's nice to have some options, and it's, it's truly nice to have options that we can vet, and we don't, we're not just, you don't just have one option, you have, I think, some, some very good options. And then this was, this was touched on, but we'll have a construction manager, Risk, will make that selection in November. Am I saying that right?
Proposal's pretty close, it's on, Kate's looking at the legal contract right now.
So we'll put that request for proposals out soon.
Yes.
We'll go through, we'll go through a similar vetting processes to the process following for picking the architect, and we'll have that CMR on somewhere in November, sooner rather than later.
Probably like in November.
I like where we're, I like the, the road that we're on. And then the other thing, that if you'd asked me a couple of weeks about this, I would've said, oh, yeah, it's important, but it's not time-sensitive, we don't have to do it right away. And that is the naming of the high school. And the more I think about this topic, the more I think that we should go ahead and do that sooner rather than later, certainly not a rush. But I think if we do that either towards the end of this calendar year, or at the beginning of the next calendar year, we can put our policy in place, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here, we have a policy that has proven beneficial over time, we can put that policy in place, we can put that naming committee in place, and we can begin that, the process of naming the high school. And there are a couple of reasons why I think sooner rather than later is a good idea. There are a lot of things happening right now, we're going to, uh, pick a site, but a lot of other things are design development, and our community's really not going to see anything, other than what they hear from us at the meetings. So from one, from one perspective, it'd be nice to have the community see progress is making place towards the new high school. Another thing that I think is important in, in this process is moving the concept, or moving the idea of a new high school to more of a reality of a new high school. Rather than calling it the new Northwest High School, we can call it whatever the name is for the new high school, and, and begin having that concept become more of a reality. So I would see that as the, as the eighth thing of things that you can see over the next couple of months. I know this isn't a, a board meeting where we'll take action, but if, if naming the new high school sooner rather than later gives you any heartburn, please let me know. Uh, but I, but I think what I'll do, the, the policy asks me to put that committee in place, that, that committee does consist of a, of a board member, uh, I would ask that whoever isn't on the...
Steering.
Steering committee would be part of that naming committee, and, and, quite frankly, probably a good spot for the, for the board president to sit in, to sit on that naming committee, and, and put that naming committee together, and by the end of this calendar year, or January, February of next year, we put that committee together, and name this high school, check that off the list as something done. So you've seen bond issue from a big perspective, you've seen the high school, that part, I've taken you back out to the whole, I would say if you have any questions, let's hear them now, but it's all systems go, and, and I'm excited to have this as something that we can all sink our teeth... But it's all systems go and I'm excited to have this as something that we can all sink our teeth into. And I'll say the same thing I said before the vote, and that is this is something that'll impact this district for a good long time. And it's exciting to be a part of it.
Questions for Brian?
Well, we have a meeting similar to this regarding the middle school then as well?
Probably. It'll be, I think we'll do something like this over time for, for some varying degree for each project, depending upon what requires a lot of input. But I think through the steering committee, which oversees that whole bond process, and then what comes back here to work sessions or to board meetings, I think that'll be critical, really for a year and probably for six years, but really for the next year while all these things really begin to take motion. Probably won't be as cumbersome, that's the word I come up with right now. Probably won't be as cumbersome as the high school process. But without a doubt, there'll be some design development, et cetera, et cetera, for each one of the projects.
I think policy does have us bringing back at certain times. So you see the drawings and see the sites. Yeah, so you'll bring those to you as they start to develop.
Very good. Any other questions? If not, committee reports. Mr. Tulkey?
ASBSD, we, November fourth is delegate assembly.
Sixteenth, I thought you said.
Okay, November sixteenth.
Okay. We'll confirm that. We'll confirm that.
No PTA meeting, sports authority was off this week. And I was in interviewing the architects on the insurance committee meeting. Was held and Cynthia sent in a report.
Okay.
On that. So I actually have nothing to report.
Good.
Head start, the starts have not aligned for me going to their meetings. This year I was in PR the last time they met. And policy, we met yesterday. We have five that are going to be up for review, revise. Pretty simple changes, if any. And then one significantly changed policy on open enrollment. So just suggest you guys read through the changes on those, on that policy when we get those posted. But do you have any other ads on that one?
No, just that we'll be doing second, is it second reading?
Yeah, it'll be up for.
First reading, but then on Monday, we have second reading of the policies from the prior month too. So those are still posted if people have feedback. That was, I think the main one on that was the high school physicals.
And graduation.
And graduation requirements are the two that are still out for public comment. So we'll talk about those Monday night.
Yep. And those are the only committees.
Good.
Calendar, we, many of us got a survey, so that's kind of exciting. So that will be helpful for, as we, my understanding is they'll be doing kind of surveys, which I like the timing of this since school just started, so you can get people's fresh perspective. And so Kent, you maybe didn't get a survey because you're not, you don't have any students, or? So it asked four basic questions about how you felt about the beginning of school. Did you like the two days and then four days? Did you like the long Labor Day weekend or do you prefer a three day versus a four? So very short, very easy, but I think a great way to get some feedback from people. And so my understanding is that there will be a few more of those kind of throughout the year so that when the calendar committee convenes again, January, February, maybe? Jamie?
Have we started? And hopefully get all that feedback so we'll space out a little bit. And then get that feedback so when we do meet, our committee has.
All the results, yeah. For the next calendar, which is the 2021, I think is the next one we're going to work on. Yeah. So, so for people who haven't taken that survey, have them check their mailboxes and give us some feedback on that. Workforce development, we have not, we did not meet last month. And I'm not really sure the status of that committee. I've emailed a couple of times, so I don't, I feel like, I don't know if our work is done because it kind of, yeah, it kind of shifted. So I don't have anything to report because we haven't met. We didn't meet all summer and we didn't meet last month either. So, and then we talked about policy, so it's the end of mine.
Okay. Mr. President, you're right, it is November sixteenth for delegate assembly.
Thank you. October fourth is the region meeting, which is tomorrow night in Madison. And I am going to that to learn.
Represent?
Yes, what ASBSD has suggested. Not to put you on the spot, Todd, but did you go to the insurance committee meeting?
Yeah, I was there. Well, I left, we were late with Todd.
Okay, okay. And Cynthia sent me a report and I was out of town over the weekend and I haven't got the report. So I will apologize.
We all, she sent it to all of us.
Okay.
So we all have that.
So we all have it.
Individually.
Okay, good, good. I.
Individually.
Individually. She sent it to us.
I didn't know that everyone had gotten it because it just came to me. So.
Right.
And I read it, but I don't have anything to report. So we'll assume we each read it. Okay, very good. Chamber board, you know, good things, good things happening in Sioux Falls. There was a Bloomberg report that came out yesterday about why Sioux Falls has continued to grow and thrive, where a lot of Midwestern cities haven't. And, you know, I think part of that is, is the, you know, chamber activity. But we've got more than just that in Sioux Falls. You know, good public schools, good business community that is supportive, community that is supportive of public education and what we do as a school district and, you know, so good things there. Budget will start in November. Southeast Tech had their fiftieth anniversary celebration and great turnout for that. The weather held for that and that was good. That's all I've got. So anything else to come before the board? Then we will adjourn the work session. Thank you all for being here.